Okay. So, welcome, welcome to our regularly scheduled Town Hall meeting of Town of Poetry. We are an official town now and we want you though to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and what minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. So with that said, we will do a roll call. Councilmember Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackie.
Here.
Councilmember Vincent.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Okay, and the forum is confirmed. We have Pastor Michael Lindon here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, the guilty rights. Remain standing for the invocation.
Let's all face the flag, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While I have you standing, let's all bow our heads in prayer. Father, we just thank you for this day, and just thank you for this opportunity to come together and share our hearts, share our vision, share our opinion for this wonderful, wonderful town. Lord, we ask your blessing over this meeting tonight. We thank you that Jesus is the Prince of Peace. So Father, we pray in your peace and your guidance and your wisdom over our meeting tonight, and we thank you for it in Jesus' name. Everybody said?
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so under items of community interest, we have a big thank you from Mary Jones and family donated a beautiful desk that will fit in the office, the new office of the Town Hall. We're very grateful to that. The Fletchers donated a pair of microphones. Unfortunately, the cable for those microphones has not arrived yet, but we have two more cables, so instead of just two microphones for our meetings, we'll have four. So we're very grateful to them for that. Mr. Ghost also donated a significant amount for the church restore project, and that will probably go for the new septic system, so we're very grateful to him. We also have on this Saturday, the Community Work Day scheduled from nine to five at the Camp Brown Church. If you can even come for an hour or two, that's most appreciated. We have, again, online, under road reports, under going to G, or road reports, we do have an online system that you can go to if you see a problem in a road near you in poetry jurisdiction. You can fill that out and has a place on there and you can designate how many potholes there are, what size, and we've tried to address some of those. So on there, if you haven't seen that, we had a crew work, what, a week ago, Thursday? And they did quite a great job. I think they filled, they had a nice crew there, and there's been some pictures going around of, I think, what, six or seven guys from the town. Councilmember Fowler was one, Kevin, Mike Griffin, let's see, Marcus Hawkins, Mr. Phillips. So they were able to fill several holes. I'm very appreciative of the, and the donated materials, so thank you so much. Okay. Catherine, there you are. So we have under the Reports Planning and Zoning Report, Catherine Hartbrook is here to give us a real short report on that.
Let's see if I've been talking to the microphone correctly this week. Okay, we have the meeting, we've got a map to work on, I've got an example back there. We picked out some things, we are striving very hard to meet that mandate of keep poetry poetry. In that interest, I have set up an email called poetryplanning@gmail.com, and I would really appreciate it if people would send me emails with their idea of what poetry is. What is it to you, what is it that brought you here, keeps you here? What is it you want to see in 10 years? Because the Planning and Zoning Committee has faced with a tremendous challenge to do something that we're not finding an example of out there. We want to keep it rural. We want it to be ag, and most cities want to grow. So I need your help, and if you need to look at the email, I've got some little ones cut out back there, you can take one with you, but really, poetryplanning@gmail.com. Give us your ideas, give us your fears, your hopes, what you think should happen, and if you've got experience, we would welcome it. There are hundreds and hundreds of pages of statutes that we have to comb through to stay legal, to protect your right to stay rural. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, so, and that was poetryplanning@gmail.com. Is that, okay, thank you, Catherine. I think we have a good group of people working hard on that to keep poetry poetry. All right, consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the August 17th, 2021 regular council meeting.
This is the revised. I'm sorry.
No, no. So this is just, because the last meeting was a workshop, we didn't vote on anything, so this is just from that, the 31 pages of the five-hour meeting. So, all right. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Raise your hand, and it passes unanimously. And we've had some internet problems with Ms. Dorothy Gillan, who has been in San Antonio, so I do not have the minutes yet from the September 7th, and we'll just push that back. That's okay, we'll just push that back to the next meeting, we do not have those. Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. So we do have amended minutes from the June 15th meeting, and there is a highlighted section, thank goodness for video and audio, right, you can go back, and it was just the number seven, I'll read that amendment. A motion was made to create a subcommittee of mayor, one council member, and attorney with confidence in county judges, road commissioners, and attorneys to discuss possible interlocal agreement for road maintenance, allowing the mayor, council member, and two subject matter volunteers to assist in the process. And that did pass unanimously, and when we look back, that wasn't voted that way, so we want to make sure that that's clear. So, and that came up on one of the previous meetings, and we wanted to make sure that we are clear on that, so.
Did you repeat that?
Okay, number seven, this is on the June 15th, and I believe on some of those it says the wrong date, it was June 15th. Number seven, a motion was made to create a subcommittee of, of a mayor, one council member, and attorney with confidence in county judges, road commissioners, and attorneys to discuss possible interlocal agreement for road maintenance, allowing the mayor, council member, and two subject matter volunteers to assist in the process. And that was passed, motion by White and seconded by Fowler. And it was voted on five, and then opposed by zero.
I went back and watched that same meeting, and we've only.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're out of order. I'm sorry, you're out of order. So, are there any? I need the cards, thank you.
Can we move this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just move it out.
Okay. All right, so there's been some talk to move that. I have to go down after recess, so, sure, we can do that. So, we do have, well, we do have Nancy Perry and Sherri Vincent. Did you want to pass Nancy Perry? I don't know who one Nancy Perry is, you want to?
Is this going to be pushed until after the special?
Or? Well, we have voted on that, so you're up, you'd like to talk.
Sorry, I'm correcting something. This is about the meeting.
This is amending of an amendment, okay. All right. So, council, can we do that? We're going to have to do that before maybe something, or should we just after?
I don't know.
I need to review the video before.
Then why?
The revise.
We'll push this till later.
Okay, till later in the meeting.
Could we just took a reset?
No, today. I don't want to take up any time right now, during the recess, I'll.
Okay, well, you can go ahead and move over that one.
All right, so all those in favor are moving that to after the recess.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We're, number one, they want to look, amended regular meeting minutes, we're trying to amend those, and we want to look at the video, they want a chance to listen to the video on that.
Who is that?
Terry.
Terry, is there a second on that?
Oh, I guess.
Okay, so there's a motion that's been seconded to move, number one, to after the recess, so we're looking at time to look at that. Okay, all those in favor? All right, and that passes, we're going to move number one to after recess. Y'all can remind me, please. All right. Number two, all right, number two, discuss and consider a resolution of the Town of Poetry Texas adopting rules and procedure for town council meetings. So we have a resolution that Mike Jackie worked on, we talked in the workshop, so we borrowed, provided from the Town of Tulia, we had looked at four or five different towns and how they do their rules and procedure, and I think at least a few of us liked that one, and so I think there's a lot of insert Town of Poetry and kind of go with that. Is there, we have Nancy Perry, would you like to speak to the rules and procedure?
Okay, real quick, the last meeting was chaotic, and I just want to say thank you for taking the time to establish rules and procedures for that, I guess, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy. Sherri Vincent?
I would like to double the amount of meetings you said.
Okay. Is there any discussion? It's not? I had a lady who used to work on the Dallas City Council give me a packet, it was like 37 pages on the rules and procedure for Dallas, and this one isn't quite that long, thank you.
Well, and Tara, just to kind of give a little color to it, so, you know, again, we agreed in the workshop, I thought, on kind of the construct of it, and the tool you wanted being the base because it was closest to us, and so, not being a lawyer, but handy with a work processor, I did the substitution for the town, but also cut out the part about city manager because we don't have a city manager, and substituted in Town Secretary for the parts of city manager, you know, that had to do with submitting agenda items and feedbacks and other things. So, I think, you know, it's the first draft, but I think it is probably something we can get started with, and having looked at a couple of other towns about our size, it looks like this is sort of a living document, you know, it's going to grow over time as we run into things, hopefully not in an onerous way where it burdens us, but, you know, things that maybe work really well, and, you know, we find other things that don't work as well. But I think, you know, for my part anyway, I think it's a good idea to get started with something, because again, we have established rules and procedures already, we just don't have anything written down, so I think it's good for us because that way the citizens have an opportunity to see what they can expect from us in advance.
I know the state has guidelines, and they give towns like ours, type A, towns, they give us guidelines, so one of the things that it has here, that after being recognized by the mayor, presiding officer, the person shall approach the podium and state his or her name and full address, and I think it says address here, and I discussed that with our legal counsel, and it handed me the full address, so that was a question that I had. So.
Yeah, I guess, by the way, I looked at it, I don't have any problems with the substance. The only thing, Patricia, Emily, have you all reviewed this for clarity, type O's?
It hasn't been.
Okay, well, I guess that's what I caught, is some things that, just minor consistencies, just because I'm not an attorney over here, Mr. Jackie, I think you got the essence right, but there are some things I think need cleaning up, and I could point out the things I said, but there aren't a few substances.
We'll take care of that, get it cleaned up, yes.
So Tara, can you restate your question? Your question had to do with people stepping up to the mic and giving their address?
So, it was just, I just had a question, do they state their address or their full address? And so here it says they state their name and address, so we can, I guess we can clarify that, is that right?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, watching, in fact, Sue and I watched Rockwell Council last night, just to kind of get a feel for how other councils operate, and that's their routine, that's not where I got it, but that is in fact what they do. People get up and they just say basically their street address, they don't say either Rockwell, and I'm not even sure what that's for, maybe to establish if they actually are in the city, I don't know, but that seems to be a routine that some of the councils that I've dropped in on here.
I've seen that as well, and unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to review this, I got it printed before I got here, that's about as much time as I had. Being the privacy freak that I am, I would tend to not want to state my full address in front of wanting to address the council. I can see putting the address on the sign-up form so we can have it for the record, but as far as writing, reading out my full address in front of the general public, I'm not real fan of that. I can see doing a compromise and saying, I'm a citizen in the ETJ or general public, something like that, but I wouldn't be a fan of full address.
I guess I'd add something Mike said last week, half of India already has our addresses and phone numbers, so a few people here, really doesn't matter to me, all of India's got it.
Does somebody have to be a citizen to speak at a council meeting?
No, that's what we wanted. Okay, so, generally, the reason for that is so that you know who is living within your city and speaking to you. It's not that the folks who don't, don't matter, but those who are constituents, so it's a matter of just identifying that they are a resident of the city. And also, with public hearings, it matters in certain cases, so, I mean, I guess if you wanted to just say that you're street and not the address, and identify that you are within the city, that might be a compromise for you. During a public hearing, you would not be able to have that compromise in certain circumstances, because with like P&amp;Z items where you're talking about super majorities and things like that, you have to know what their residence, what their address is, so you know how to count them on that.
And that's what I was going to say, is for P&amp;Z, Planning and zoning, it might be important to know almost exactly where people live, because if they're going to speak on whether a building or not should be allowed, or specifics about something that could get as detailed to on property, it's a good idea to know where they live, and make sure, make sure there isn't any conflicts of interest there.
Mike, as the author of this, I just want to go over page four, we use consideration of agenda items?
Because my question, and it's came up before in just passing everybody talking, is when do the citizens get to communicate with the council or speak? So in here, if we're looking at it, members of the public on the letter E get to provide a comment, so the agenda item is brought up, the council gets to talk to the staff, if it's a staff member, we don't have any, the representative gets to talk to us, anyways, then the citizen. So if it goes into a motion, we get to discuss it at that point, but we may discuss something that the citizens want to talk to us about or ask questions about. So, I guess y'all go on, Patricia, y'all go to a lot of meetings, is it, is it not normal to have them speak after we've kind of discussed our thoughts? I mean, is it?
Typically, what happens is you'll receive the report from the staff or the council person that's sponsoring that, so that everybody kind of understands the background. Some councils have rules and procedure, although they're allowing you to speak before they make a motion. I find that not to be necessarily the best approach, because you can always change that motion, but it's helpful for some of them to know, okay, they're going to deny this, so I'm not going to feel like I need to get up and say I'm going to approve it, so I don't need to say I'm a law. So, generally, I consider it's an internal dialogue first, and if you have an applicant, it's the applicant, and then you open it up to the public. So, I would say, you know, you can have a motion and open it to the public, or you can open it to the public and then someone can make a motion, that's up to y'all. It's just how comfortable you are.
So, I guess looking forward to that, my thoughts will be, we would discuss it and let the citizens hear either what information we have or debate it up here, and then, like she said, they can either elect to say, yeah, that's not going the direction I thought, I don't need to speak, as opposed to sitting up here in front of everybody and telling their disagreements with the agenda item, and then it doesn't pass anyway. So I'd like to see the public comment come in later in the, in the agenda process.
I agree, that's one of my edits on there.
So where does that go? After a motion or after we discuss it?
I'm sorry?
So where do we put that in?
What's the correct order?
Well, I mean, I would think we would do it the, I think we would do the discussion first and then make a motion, kind of the way we've been doing it the last three or four meetings, and that's the way I made an edit, one of my edits was to do that, change that order. So I guess if we've voted on it, I'm not sure the value of the citizens' input, right? If we've already voted, it's sort of a moot point, so I want to, I might actually change my mind if somebody makes an impassioned plea over something that I didn't think of.
I agree.
So I would like, before we cast a vote, or I cast a vote, I'd like to hear all for and against, so that I have an opportunity to consider that.
I agree.
So, I guess we're, when we, so we're, I think, is this similar to what we have been doing, in your understanding?
I don't know.
How is it very?
I think we've kind of gone both ways. I mean, we're new at this government, there's no doubt about it, but I think sometimes, I think sometimes we say, here's the agenda, then we ask citizens, and then I think sometimes we discuss it as a council and then as citizens, and I think that's best practices, and it seems, Patricia, I think agrees, that we discuss it, and then it could, it could, the citizen might not even want to talk about that.
I'm going to think about that. So do you want to maybe have some discussion and then allow the citizens to speak?
I think that if we move, I O P members of the public who are provided the opportunity to make comments after another council member seconds the motion, so if we move E down after each, then we hear from the public before the discussions are finalized, but after they know the exact motion, can we?
Yep.
Okay, so there is an amendment to this, I think we have, we have a motion, a formal motion for that, I believe you sort of said, but we have a motion to move item E down to below I, is that correct?
Below H.
Below H.
Yeah.
Below H.
E after H.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I saw move.
All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded to move item E, where we have members of the public providing an opportunity to make comments for public hearings, to after the council has made a motion and has been seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and that passes? And I need to kind of back up on this, we discussed it, but we didn't really make a decision on the address situation. Do we want to have them state mainly their street that they're on, and maybe the city that they're in, if it's Poetry, or it's ETJ, or if it's Abel Springs, or it's Alaska? Do, how do we want to handle that?
Well, I certainly understand Brian's point of view, and I'm into my privacy as well, but voter records are all public, tax records are all public, we know most of the people are going to stand up here and talk personally, so I don't know, I'd go with convention on this one, just because it's handy to know, okay, you live on, county wrote this, or you live on highway, whatever, I don't know, that would help me orient to who they are and what side of county they're on, but.
I agree.
Okay, is there, it's regarding letters, so we have, I think we need to address that somehow, full address, or you want to make a motion?
Well, we can, we can just take a straight-up vote, if more than Brian feels that way, then we'll change it. Now, we're actually voting, we're being clear on the resolution, and this is simply an attachment to, right? So we're voting on this one page that says we're adopting rules and procedures, and they are attached to this.
Yes, it's an amendment, yes.
Okay, so we've approved an amendment.
Well, we have to do the amendment first and then we approve.
Right, but we've passed that, so it's now amended.
So as far as the, this particular paragraph, we have to address, do we want name and full address?
Well, I make a motion, we approve it as is.
Okay.
I thought, I thought the lawyer said to look at that resolution, is that not right?
They've already, they've already, they already.
They just asked it, they said that was happened.
Well, she has a page here, and then ours is the addendum.
This that says we're adopting.
The one page, yes, it's the attachment.
Yeah, they're, so pending their tweet on it.
Well, I have no problem with the resolution on one page.
Okay. Okay, and the other thing on this, this, that after the general comments, I noticed there was a section here where council members could not speak after a general comment, and I think the state allows you to, correct me if I'm wrong, the state, the state allow you to?
What page are you on?
You're on J, letter J, is that there?
It's the second. I think.
Right now, we're considering the ordinance, the one page, right? Are we considering the one page or the rest?
The one page, because this is the addendum to the resolution, so we're considering all, is my, yeah, so. Yes, okay, so I have another sheet, okay, so, citizens may also make comments on any items, not put on the general comments, but it says town council members will be unable to respond, so is that typical? So it's just, I know, so the presiding officer, I believe this, I know I'm one of those who would usually speak factual information.
On citizen comments, on citizen comments, you can direct them to the city secretary for more information, you can make a factual comment, like if somebody came up and they were wanting to know about road closures, you'd say, you know, X etc., it's going to be closed Monday.
you'd say, you know, X etc. roads are going to be closed Monday or Friday or whatever. But you are not to begin deliberating that. So usually I try to say just one person who has that knowledge, you can speak up and give that information, or direct them to see somebody offline or one of your committees they need to talk to. But you can't get involved in deliberating that, so it's just factual responses. And public carries are both public, so y'all don't speak during the public here, which is why the rest of that's ordered that way.
Okay, all right, so do, that was just a point of clarification, thank you. So do, is there a motion to approve this as written pending legal?
Yeah, you have a live motion that's made.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Or is there...
Just got one more question, but then you guys will listen on this.
Well, you can discuss that. You can go ahead. Go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to accept this resolution as amended?
No. Tara, we're not accepting a attachment A, exhibit A. We're only accepting page one.
The one pager?
Yes.
But this is exhibit A?
The resolution is approving exhibit A.
I agree.
So what might be done as exhibit A and has pending any things that legal might need to change?
Right, so I think pending legal scrubbing, we shouldn't change the nature of it, it's just going to make sure the words are in the right order.
Right.
I've got a couple things to comment about exhibit A. That's what we're doing. In the right of members to behold, to be heard, we have the mayor, the presiding officer who's been authorized asking members to cease or to limit discussion or to call a question when it goes on. But to cease or to limit discussion, I think we should at least put some stipulations in there, as I've seen with some of their ordinances, that each councilman can speak at least once on every item. You know, we won't have, obviously, a problem with Ms. Tarshy, great, but if we had overbearing mayor in the future that liked to silence opinions, then I think we should have something in there, say, each councilman can speak at least for two minutes, at least once on every topic or something to that.
We know that law rich rules, I did some study on that, and they do have that where you let each member have a chance to speak before another person's allowed to speak a second time, and that's unfair. But as far as timeline, I don't think we're allowed to do a timeline here.
This looks like it's some type of attempt to stop filibustering, is what it looks like.
So we might need to amend that. Show them where that was again.
What page you said on there?
That is on the addendum, that's top of page three. Well, depends on your printer, who does.
Page four.
Procedures. Okay, so that is...
Is it page four?
Top of page four. It says, the mayor, the presiding officer shall be authorized to ask any member to cease or limit discussion or to call the question when it appears further discussion will not be meaningful. So...
Patricia, can the council overrule that? So if Tara, hypothetically, if Tara were to try to stop discussion, can't the council vote to continue discussion and it continued? So there's sort of a check and balance?
So this is written, it says that the mayor is authorized to do that. You could always call a board of order if you thought there was any use. That maybe what we can do is to add down here instead of saying, or to call a question when it appears no further discussion, that further discussion will not be meaningful and just put, call a question when no new issues are identified or opinions are being provided, so that we can stop that. So that if there's nothing new being added, then that way. And that would at least give a standard for the mayor to apply and for y'all to make a point of work on.
So call a question is just going to ask for a vote, so, and your original was just call a question when...
No, when the issue is unidentified or opinions are offered.
So I put on there, call a question when no new opinions are offered, so is there...
Okay, so I think I need to withdraw my original motion so that we can continue the discussion here. So I withdraw my motion to pass this as it was earlier in the...
So do we have a motion to add that line in?
Should we make all these amendments and then just pass it as an amendment? Do we have to approve every amendment to this resolution?
I think we might just recall.
Yes, so I don't, I don't know how many, how many more do we have here?
I mean, I just have a couple questions.
Tara, why can't we just give our comments to the lawyer and let them work it, and then we look at it again next meeting? That would make it a lot simpler.
Well, we're trying to possibly pass this to my end.
I'm sure we're ready.
So Simi, can you, is there, how much more do you have on your comments? Because it is in pretty good form, I believe.
Yeah, it's in pretty good form, and I just wanted to clarify some of this stuff. In a special meeting, we have the mayor or, let's see, requested by, a special meeting signed by two members of the council submitted to the secretary, you know, gets made into a special meeting. Now, let's just check, checking if that was board, that's page two, under the special meetings. Just a special meeting being formed by two or more members, it's in that first sentence actually at the end. As far as I understand, if that would mean two councilmen, is that correct? Yeah, two members of the town council. Are we picking two because three would break O M A regulations to pass that? Because I wouldn't be discussing moving in one of those forward potential votes.
I think it's just two.
Well, what I'm asking is, could we do three or is that going to break the open two?
And I think, I have mine as a, I think that might track the local government code, because when a general law city has, when a, when a general law city has a special meeting, you have to have two thirds of membership in attendance as well. So regular meetings is a regular forum and special meetings is two thirds. And I'll have to look to see, but I thought that might be tracked from the local government code.
The question was, can two council members call when they cannot be in attendance? So, or if...
Not sure what?
No. Say, for instance, the mayor doesn't want to call a meeting, but two council members say, no, we want a meeting, so we have to have a meeting. He's asking, if we made that three, would that be violating O M A because that would be a forum deciding to call a meeting, which means they would have had that discussed previously?
Yes, and that's probably why, but I, I think this tracks, if you kind of pull it up over here, I think that probably tracks the special meeting provisions for general law cities as well. No, I'll just have to check.
Well, I think that's pretty much all of that I have there.
Okay, so I have, in the other rules of procedure from other towns, some of them said one, some said two. I think two is pretty common on that, is what I read. So, any other issues? Okay, see? All right, so, I mean, it's not hard and stone, this can be limited, so, but I think it is good to... Can we get our comments on it? Do we have a motion then to approve with exhibit A this resolution regarding the adopted rules of procedure for the town council meetings?
With the stipulation that the lawyers get to work their edits.
Yes.
Because there is several places that need cleaned up for consistency.
Is there a motion? Okay, is there a second? Okay, top second here. All right, so all those in favor, adopting this resolution for the town, Poetry, adopting rules of procedure for the town council meetings, pending the legal amendments, all those in favor? And that passes four, and it's staying one.
Upstaying or no?
Upstaying. I haven't had a chance to read it, so I'm not going to go for it.
All right. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have interview candidate Caroline Chaplin for the town secretary position. We did have two others. One retracted her resume when she realized the scope of the job. She's wanting to retire, she's still working, but she's retiring here soon, and she retracted that. And we had another one who took the job in Jersey temporarily, so she can't be here either. So we have one candidate, I think she's a fine candidate, Caroline Chapman. You can look at her resume. I did, tried to do diligence and call some references. I did discuss with the Dallas Baptist University Director of the Writing Center that she formerly worked for, and these were her words. She said, Caroline, she is awesome, her work ethic is outstanding, she's honest, forthright, creative, dependable, she spots talents in others, she's exceptional. She ended up being a supervisor and a writing consultant. She said, I would hire her in a second. I do not have any reservations at all. And that was Katie Riley from D V U, Director in Writing Center. Then I talked with Katie Carson. She works, currently works part-time for her, and here's what she had to say. She's been coming to poetry for years, she does marketing, social media, brands, interaction, she does all things for us. She, she's a standout. Her ability to see a need and take care of it and anticipating needs is exceptional. She said also, one of the things that she vices about Caroline is that she's a peacekeeper. She doesn't like to take sides, she stays neutral but accepts everyone, and she's highly versatile, versatile and adaptable. So in all my years of hiring people, that was pretty high praise, so. Any comments or questions?
About that?
We can call Caroline up, I suppose, bitch in a hot seat. Now, we will be going into private executive session for a little bit in order to discuss, because as a legal code analysis, we're not going to embarrass a, a, a future possible staff member, so we, for her consideration, we are allowed to go into executive meeting on that. But right now, we're just going to ask some basic questions.
Hi. K A R O L I N E, how do you pronounce it?
Caroline.
Looked up your resume, it's interesting. I, I think it's, it's good, I like the Public Policy Foundation work you did. How did you hear about us?
So I heard about you guys, I'm a long time friend of Simi White and this family, and so they've been looking out here for about 12 years, is that right? So we've been coming out here in my family since they moved out here, since they're some of our best friends, we spend holidays, we spend our Christmases, and now I work for a poetry-based business, so I come out here even more for work. So I've been hearing all about poetry becoming a separate town, everything going on with that, and I really love small-town values and what you're doing, so I was excited to let Simi let me know that there was an opening to be a part of that affiliate.
As a communicator, without relying on what's on your resume, tell us, how can you help?
I can help you guys, especially with my writing and editing skills, and they all need someone who can keep up with town visits, who can help with the newsletter, who can help with agendas, pretty much all of your written needs. I spend a lot of time writing and editing and also going back and forth with people, so I'm very adept at taking other people's feedback into consideration and working with lots of opinions to fixate, so I think I can be quick and adaptable in getting the livables out there, which would free up some of this Tara's time and hopefully save the other council members' time as well. And then I'm also open to be trained at Tara's, some of the other needs that have to do with keeping the budget, some of the bookkeeping and things like that. So I'm very adaptable, ready to learn some of those other things I don't have as much experience with, but I think my writing, editing, communicating skills would be a big help for a lot of your needs.
My last question is a two-part. What do you see as the biggest challenge and how are you going to cover it?
That's a good question. I think the biggest challenge will be some of the training and new skills. I know there's a few things I'm going to be certified in in order to legally be y'all's secretary, so I know that would take a little bit of time and studying, but I do like to learn, so I think I would just put that willingness to learn to work, and I've had a chance to meet all of you, some of you briefly, and got to know this Tara, and obviously knows Simi well, so I know that I would have a lot of patience and help with that. But I'm really interested in learning those things that you guys have in need, so that's how I would tackle that.
One thing that I did ask her, she is very familiar with the Wix.com type of setup because part of the job is keeping up with the website, and she is very familiar with that, so that was really nice of her, actually. Any other questions? So we have, I don't think we have three citizens to speak. Thank you, Caroline. So three citizens, Patricia, are they able to ask the candid questions or how does this work on any type of questions?
Well, the citizens address the council, so just make note of what their questions are. She looks like I must have been asked with a question.
All right, Nancy Carey. Sharon Crouch.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Crouch, my address is 1001, they're alike, but with the new rules, I'm kind of poetry and ETJ, I'm kind of in the middle. Anyway, after hearing this very exciting woman, promising woman, she sounds like she's very talented, and I think she would be a really jewel if you would secure her. I don't know her at all personally, but just hearing her and being a former employer myself, I think you'd really be an asset there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, Sharon Vincent?
I would like to say, and I would like to wonder, I'm wondering if she can have volunteers to come and help her at the beginning of her...
That's a different question.
It is a different question.
If anyone can volunteer, don't worry anything.
All right, well, I do know the secretaries from, you know, that would have offered two assists, who chose the ropes, that would be really welcome, but they were very gracious once, I suppose, that was very nice of them. So, okay, so we have no more citizens' comments, we have, it seems like the council has no more comments publicly, so we're going to break off into an executive... So we're going to break off into an executive session. So we're going to go back in the back. And Lauren is going to take some notes.
You need to read this exact and then say to us.
Okay. Number J. Executive session, according to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.001 ET SEQ, the town council will recess into executive session, close meeting, to discuss the following. 551 dot zero seven four. Deliberation required appointment, evaluation, reassignment and then duties, discipline or business of public officer or employee and town secretary.
Did you say the time?
And the time is 7:21. Okay, so we're going to reconvene. The time is now 7:39. So we've closed our executive session. But we're going to take a little recess for the council. Five minutes. We are going to reconvene. Recession is over. Okay, so in the recess, council member Lauren, I do get to re-hear the video. And so from, as we suggested from the, we were amending the minutes from the June 15 meeting. And was there any discussion on that?
So just for clarity, I just want to move the citizen part up. It says a motion was made to create a subcommittee of mayor, county member and attorney with Kaufman. I want to move and to subject matter volunteers behind attorney. That's the only amendment I want to make for that.
Okay, so we have, we have a second on that.
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded that the amendment to be amended to say to subject matter volunteers right after a attorney, to make it more clear.
And are there any other couple comments?
Are there any others? I don't, I think we already talked. Okay, so. Can I take a vote? All right, all those in favor, amendment to the minute. And it passes unanimously. So we're going to reconvene with four discussing this of appointing the town secretary. In the executive session, we cannot take a vote. So that has to be in public. So do we have a motion?
I move to appoint Caroline Chapman as town secretary with contingent upon finalization of a contract and determination of bondability. I also propose that the mayor works with the town attorney to finalize the contract and accordance with the budget and job description. And this was written by the town attorney, under which I agree. I think it's well written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we're going to take a vote. All those in favor of that motion, which has been made and seconded, raise your hand. And four and one abstains. So that passes. Let me note it, I think, because he's been a family friend, Cindy and Father, or Cindy and White is going to abstain from that vote since he's been a family friend of theirs for a number of years. Okay, number five. Discussing considering ordinance for the town poetry Texas approving a franchise agreement with Farmers Electric Cooperative, FEC, providing a penalty for violations of the ordinance of providing or publication and effective date. We have a discussion.
Tara, it's kind of a peripheral issue, but I know there's been some chatter about the On Court Agreement and who's in and who's out and all of that. So I just want to bring up that here again, with FEC, we basically take care of the rest of the town. I think On Court and FEC are the only two providers in the town of poetry. So we do need to figure out incidental to this, who's subject to this franchise fee. And that will also help us figure out who's subject to the other. In other words, who's, who's in the city limits? If we're going to, On Court is going to and FEC, they're going to increase their rate by a small amount and then remit that money to the city in the form of a franchise payment. And so we just want to make sure that only the people that are benefiting from the town services, albeit in small, right now, are the ones that are paying that, not the folks that are in the ETJ.
So Samantha Crouch of FEC has, they have requested a map. They're trying very diligently to get that accurate. And for some reason, they do not. You can certainly call in and discuss that with them. You know, our map is a little more difficult than average. So they are trying. Okay, is what I'm going to say, they're trying. I do know that Mayor Craig of Union Valley says they fund their entire town on franchise fees and they have primarily that. Small towns, you know, do that. So we do have to speak on number five. We do have some citizens that want to speak. Nancy Carey. Okay, she's going to pass. Tonya Pollock. Okay. And Sharon Vincent. So Emily, this is very similar to the On Court Agreement. The FEC does typically give an annual dispersment. And so one of the things that Emily, Volodov here, the assistant attorney was doing, was trying to get it to be quarterly because we are a baby town and we need to be fed regularly. So we, we can't do just an annual. So, so that is kind of what they were going back and forth on.
So do we have an idea? Tara, it looks like on page six, it says the sum of money equal to 4% of the annual gross receipts for the preceding calendar year. So is that the franchise fee? Is 4% of their gross receipts from the town?
And that's, that's about the same that, of course, On Court, they will point zero three million, you know, as well.
So do we, do we have kind of even a rough estimate of how much money that is to us? I mean, what are our figures?
No. We, we don't have, we have a estimate, not an estimate, based on what On Court provided for us for those several months we've had to reject. And so we really do not know.
Well, it's not a trick question. I'm not trying to trick you. I just wanted, I wonder, you know, as we work on finding our budget to go from guesses to educated guesses of this curious one, what 5% of their base in our town is? I don't have any idea what that means.
And I don't think they, they know either. I think they're just figuring that all out. But it does say September 30th. So we kind of have an idea here, not too long. Because based on, now they say for fee, September 30th for fees collected for an effective date of this ordinance through August 31st. So.
Because the effective date of the ordinance is when? After we pass it? And so that's after August 31st. So it's going to be zero.
Now with On Court, what they did, it wasn't a line item on the bill. They just calculated. So this, I'm not sure if they're trying to do something similar to that or.
On Court was good, just they, they gave the back. They've also so far have not charged HSP to the individuals, you know, to the households. So that's, that's good as well. Yeah, I, I would expect that On Court's having in around $10,000 for three months, was it?
No, it was actually from November, end of November to May 31st.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question. On Court went back to January 1st retroactively. Is it, in this one, it only looks like September 30th.
Right. Well, it, it says through August 31st. No, FEC is a much smaller company, so they can't do all that. On Court has been very good, but they're much bigger.
I guess to ask a question further, do we ask them to go retroactively? January 1st?
I didn't. I did, I did mention and they're like, yeah. Can't really do that. I did try.
Okay, so it's, so it's retroactive to the first September?
Um, August 31st.
Okay. Two weeks. Assuming we pass it.
Assuming we pass it.
Well, I read it as much as I could. And I was, I guess, by the way, Patricia and Evelyn, you've already reviewed this and got your comments on the FEC.
I'm going to say one thing and then I'll answer your question off it because I just noticed I actually got something to agree to another year of quarterly payments. And so this A through G will have another set of letters like that. And that's for the following year through 2023. So every A is the same. You guys are just approved to be subject to town attorney, you know, approval and getting that clarified to create that additional year of quarterly payments. And if you ask a question again, will you? Will you ask a question?
I'm sorry, I have two questions. One is, did we ask them to go retroactively to January 1st?
That hasn't been asked. No, that hasn't been asked.
The second question was, have you and Patricia reviewed this?
Yes, it's sensitive. Yeah, it was. But Samantha was great at FEC and I think you guys have a good relationship. And she complimented you and she complimented the town. She, she said that you were very, she really appreciated working with us. Yeah, I've been tiring there, so.
So your second here, does it go through letter K?
So G adds seven letters. If that would be K, then yes.
Well, Tara and I have different ones. I have G and then on the next page I have.
Here, I can take a look at the top. Yep, so that's correct when you were reading that.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept this ordinance?
How many motions accepted?
We have a second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the agreement, the ordinance, the town poetry Texas granting to Farmers Electric Cooperative the successors and assigns a franchise agreement as written. All those in favor? And it passes unanimously. Okay, number six. Now although we passed the actual nuts and bolts of the budget, we haven't approved an ordinance and that, of course, required legal to provide that for us. And so we're here to just kind of, in the form of discussing considering ordinance of the town poetry Texas approving the town's budget for fiscal year 2021 and 22. And it is two pages and a little bit. And it's just ordinance of the town poetry Texas adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, ending September 30th, 2022, according to the state law, providing for the funding of the budget as represented in Exhibit A. And it goes on. So. It's the legalese. And then it has a place for the council members to have for a guess. Is there a discussion? Okay, we have some citizens. Nancy Carey. Tonya Pollock. Tonya Pollock. Lon Anken.
I'm really concerned about this budget deal tonight. And let me just back up just a second. Hadn't been two years ago with a word about the city of terror coming out and that's what it's been robbed of. And then it kind of got away from them. And now we've got, we've got our town and it seems to be operating like the city of terror was steroids. I don't understand now that a one-horse town like this is going to have a budget the size of this place. It just looks to me like we're trying to figure out a way to spend all the money you can, get all of it through the meeting. I'm really concerned about that. And we've been better off maybe just to stay to the terror of that difference. Anyway, that's about all I got to say about it. I probably got a little more to say, but I can't talk about it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so this is just the ordinance part of the budget. So is there any discussion?
Remember, we accept the ordinance, we just presented.
Is there a second?
Say again.
Okay. There's been a motion and it's been seconded to approve the ordinance as written for the fiscal year October 20, October 1st, 2021, ending September 20, excuse me, September 30th, 2022. All those in favor?
We can do a roll call vote through this.
We do?
Yeah, so just list each council member's names so we can.
Oh, right, right. This is happening, thank you. Okay, so Tom Anderson, Tonya.
Yes.
Okay. Michael Duffy.
Four, yes.
Terry Bell.
Four.
Ron Wilson.
Four.
Cindy White.
Four.
Okay, so it passes unanimously and. Okay, number seven. Discuss and consider payment of bills currently due by the town. Team of risk insurance for volunteers, council and any staff for a annual payment of $1,035.86. Newspaper legal notices. It was 190 plus 209, a total of $399 was the ones that were required by the state to be able to run the bid for the bank bid and also the notice of the budget. Then Kaufman County Elections for 375 registered voters. That is at a minimal price at $550. So, and that's due by September 30th. Yes, your deposits do run in. And since that's all the other, that's due by that time. Okay, we have a current checking account balance. Thanks to On Court, we have $10,875.76. So.
Could you tell me what the Kaufman County Elections bill was for?
Okay, the Kaufman County Elections is one of the November election doing itself in these towns. So that is on the ballot for both Kaufman and Hunt County. If you live in Kaufman County, you will have to go to a Kaufman County location. So it's very different than the May 1st election. If you live in Hunt County, you will have to go to the Hunt County election. That's been posted. It's posted at the Town Hall doors. It's also posted online. I believe it's posted at a few businesses in town as well. And you'll see it, I'm sure as the time falls here because early voting starts in October or so.
Tara, Tara, I didn't understand this. I mean, she vividly said, can you kind of summarize what he said?
Okay, so you really had a hard time. Okay, so you really had a hard time when she sent me, so this was from Kaufman County. Tandy is a new elections director for them. And in the past, the way that it's done apparently is they would do a percentage of the total. Tandy's come in and she's itemized, um, most of the county, Kaufman County will have to take the bulk of the cost. So they are paying ninety eight thousand three hundred sixty nine dollars and thirteen cents for the bulk of the election costs. And then they're itemizing out based on a per share percentage of the voters. Because the Town Poetry only has three hundred seventy eight registered voters, we get point three nine percent of the cost. So, um, that ends up being five hundred estimated cost and then they have another fifty dollar fee. But the minimum that they charge me on is five hundred fifty, we got that minimum. So that's, um, you'll see other entities have to pay quite a bit more. But originally the bill was a hundred and thirteen thousand, I'm not going to pay ten percent of that, so. I was really relieved to see that we only have to pay the five fifty.
That's for the November second election?
And that's for Kaufman portion of that. They have numerous locations, like twenty seven different locations for voting in Kaufman County and Hunt is the halfway, is there anything?
So we don't know what Hunt County's share would be?
Well, we did, they have not done this same setup, so I have talked with Hunt County, um, but it's Kaufman that is on the bill in the agenda tonight. They put that in our budget, I think if you go back, we did have Hunt County's amount on the budget.
So are we looking for a motion to approve the bill?
Um, so that was number seven. Okay, so do we have to do them individually? No, we can do it all, okay. So we have some citizens, Nancy Carey, would you want to speak? Okay, she passes, Tony Pollak.
Hello, Kenzie Salisbury. I have an address or sort of, um, okay. I live on Highway thirty four, my in-house, where Joyce lives on, nine eighty six. Um, I wanted to say thank you for detailing on the, with the bill for in the agenda, that way we knew before we came. Um, also I'd like to request a detail of where the current money in the account is coming from. I don't know if that's possible, so we know, like you mentioned, that was from Encore, so we have that listed on the agenda also. And then that we, because I know like with the trash, we try, that money has to go for the road, so that way we kind of as citizens know where that money's coming from and where it's going to go. And then also you mentioned that we were doing for Kaufman County the minimum voters. So I know that Kaufman County's list of voters is not an updated list, um, because they still have to be listed as a Kaufman County voter. So is there anything that we can do to make sure that the registered voters for Kaufman County is an accurate list of voters?
That's a good point, Kenzie. So I should have clarified, she just said this is an estimate.
Okay.
So they will be fine tuning that. And if you have some questions, please do call the Elections Division of Kaufman or wherever you live and say, you know, to clarify those things, that's a good question. Also, the money, that's also the point, the money in the, um, account is from Encore, we have one check and that was the ten dollars and eight hundred and five dollars and seventy six cents. So that is just from one Encore check. So now granted, that was funds from end of last November to May thirty first. And that was a gift really, because they did not do that necessarily. Okay, so do we have a motion to, okay, wait, perhaps, oh, I'm sorry, can I see a bit? Pass this, okay. Sharon Wilson.
Pass.
Pass, okay. All right. Do we have a motion to accept these bills?
I have a motion to approve our bills.
Glad to hear it. Is there a second?
There's a second.
All those in favor? And it passes unanimously. And number eight, discuss and consider granting blank authorization to approve expenditures of not more than blank without council approval. So every town has to decide how much, um, to approve expenditures, otherwise they have to come to the council meeting for every item. So, um, one of the regular things that comes up is, um, of course, our newsletter. It's a hundred and eighty two, a hundred and eighty five dollars every month and then the stamps turn on top of that. So for the twenty or twenty five that they send out extra, the rest of them, of course, go out in the water bills. So that's a, that's a monthly cost. Now I'm trying to get, um, of course, the taxes and stuff, some reason. And there's, I've been a holdup on that, but I am trying to get that, so, um. And that will save a few dollars, but, um, there, um, there's some just standard monthly things are, you know, that we, we will have to pay. So do we have, do you guys have an idea?
I'm looking at this, I mean, it's, it's a pretty simple sentence, but I think that it needs to be a little more complicated. I mean, there's still going to be recurring payments, so even if it does, if there's a contract signed with, um, which we're going to have to go through contracts. But if we have a recurring payment, then we want to make sure that, um, you know, that the appropriate person is, is not signing up for something that overall exceeds the threshold. But we also don't want to interfere with actually having a good efficient running of the, of the town. So I think that it has to be more than just one sentence with one amount. I think that this is something that, um, needs, needs a little more consideration than that. So Jan, did my back hearing go off? Um, I'm saying that, um, I, I wouldn't want, you know, to have a, a large expenditure. And I know everybody has a different definition of what a large expenditure is. I don't know what a large expenditure for a town is, I consider twenty five dollars large for myself. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm cheeky, you can ask my wife, she will confirm. Um, so yeah, I, I'm thinking probably somewhere in the five hundred dollar range would be the threshold that we should not exceed without, um, board approval. But I don't know what that recurring threshold would necessarily be.
Brian, are you saying for a single expenditure? Because it says in plural expenditures, you mean authorization to approve a single expenditure of not more than five hundred percent?
Yes.
Okay, so the word should be modified slightly. It implies here this to be grouped together, which we're saying number one.
Well, and grouped over what period? You know, are we talking about per month or are we talking about weekly, we're talking about days? So like I said, it just needs to be more than one sentence. We need to actually, um, I wasn't expecting this one to come up, so I, I didn't really have a, um, added solution for this problem at this point. But I agree, it needs to be done.
What's kind of a good point, we need to ask your opinion.
So I'm good with five hundred dollars, I mean, I guess looking at this as a citizen or trying to look this direction at, at us, you know.
We got to make sure that, that we're super transparent.
And, and, and I'm guessing along with this, there's going to be some kind of monthly statements that's audited by council, by treasurer, by somebody.
I think we can, if actually reported, anyway.
What most cities will do is they will just have that attached as an informational item. What most cities will do is just have that attached as like an informational item at the back to show the expenses that have paid during the month. And so, I mean, you could come up with a resolution that identifies things, you could set a certain amount, you could tie it to recurring payments approved in the budget, payments approved under approved contracts, but their contracts have been approved by the council. So you can add some detail to it, um, just so that there's a comfort level, but you should have, I think it says what's requested, you know, where is this money coming from? You'll have something in, in terms of the report that should go in probably in the back of your monthly agenda that shows revenues and expenditures. Signing authority is generally going to be with the mayor and whatever he wants to. You want two people to do it in case the mayor is not in town, or you could have a requirement that two people sign off on the check, which I think most, um, financial folks will say that's a good idea to have two signatories. So you just need to make sure you've got enough people authorized to sign, that if someone's out of town or said, you would still be able to figure bills. So you call them one of these three people that you'd be able to sign off. But, and you can require two signatories, it, it just depends on what y'all want to do. I'm just wanting to, for a meeting there, and you could, you could have the city secretary as the city treasurer do that, but if she's, right now, she's part time, so it, she'd have to be accessible and you could get to her if she needed her as a signatory as well.
It's kind of like the idea of not having a personal audit, so it's having certain signing rights on the day of the meeting, so, yeah.
So the sentiment to audit normally that's CP, well, it's an accountant outside of our little framework here anyway.
So Terry, you mentioned the threshold of five hundred dollars, which I think is reasonable. The worst we're going to do is get squirreled for a month, because then we're going to have a discussion at the next meeting about spending habits. But what about the authorization to?
So that's what I was fixing to ask, uh, I mean, obviously we can pay bills as we, there's like some in up here, but maybe let's look down the Union Valley, since they look so much like us, with, you know, not city staff. And see what theirs look like, you know, I think it'd be a bad idea to get a copy of what their, what their purpose is.
Of course, they're, they, they are quite a bit smaller, actually.
Yeah, but, but they're still doing business like us, they're still granting authorization to somebody to pay expenditures, you know, weekly basis with monthly basis.
So Patricia, in your experience, you said that, how does that translate all?
Which part? Normally there's been, you know, a couple of signatures that are authorized, and so your item or mine is discussing the signature authorized signatures for the base, uh, town bank account. Um, so.
Just move on to nine and nine.
Just move on to, I mean, the two are kind of hand in hand. Um, and if you want to set, like I said, if you want to set an amount of five hundred dollars, uh, and then have two signatories required on a check.
So number eight, we say two signatories, is that what we're saying?
Well, I think you could just set the authorization amount on number eight and then, uh, yeah, with signature, signature authority, you have probably one, three authorized signatories, but yes, we will, so two, with two, no, these two signatures on each check.
So if I'm understanding correctly, number eight, we're just missing a number that we want, three signatories, two signatures to authorize two expenditures of not more than, seems like five hundred is been thrown in here, and then we'll move on to.
Well, to make it consistent, Tara, why don't we fill in the blank on eight and say discuss and consider granting signatories, authorization to approve single expenditures of not more than five hundred dollars without council approval.
Do we need to say?
You can make part of our motion, so you're posted generally to identify what the threshold is and who's going to be authorized. And then you're posted for authorized signatories on the bank account. So one's not necessarily the same as the other. Like I said, you'd want three different people at least to be able to sign on a bank account, but you just want two to be able to sign a check for that check.
I did check, um, I was trying to look at what the cost of checks were, they do, they don't have three lines, they just have two available.
Right, two, but you want, yes, you just want three people, like I said, in case two of you were in town, you know, one of you was not in town and you had two left in town, that kind of thing. To just identify three, but only two signatories on the check.
And Brian, did I hear you correct that you did not feel like the secretary, not her specifically, but that role should have signature authority?
Correct.
So Maggie, Tara, Mayor Potem, and, or the random person?
So on number eight, we just missed a three, uh, signatories first, and then to approve single expenditures of not more than five hundred without council approval. And then number nine, we don't want to who specifically we want?
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to follow up real quick on my next question there. I'm not, um, I'm not saying anything negative about anybody in the future, I've just had some experience in the past, that when somebody has accounts payable and accounts receivables in their job description, things do really go well.
Okay, so anybody, anybody else?
My experience is a lot different, but, um, you, you're valid.
Well, thank you for validating.
So anybody have any, any recommendations for who those three are?
Well, I think number eight, if we just leave in it, the number of signatories, we want three or four authorized to approve. And then number nine will go into the details of who those specific people are. So do we have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, we've got some people that want to speak to that item number eight, Nancy Carey.
Nine six seven seven, Oakland Lane, and I volunteer, but that's my only phone.
I, I'm sorry.
She volunteers.
Oh, she volunteers.
I volunteer to sign the check.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, Tom, you have a poll. Okay, Sharon Crutch.
I too, but this was on, oh, sorry, I go with my loud voice again. Too many, too many years of teaching young girls to ride horses and they're hollering out in the room, I have a loud voice. Um, a couple of things to think about, gentlemen, and I can hear both of your different sides as far as that goes. Because my thought was secretary and Tara being mayor, having a third person as an available signatory, bringing people out of town. I believe I heard someone say that there would be external audits by a third person, so that kind of keeps the secretary honest. I don't know the secretary at all, so, you know, that's going to be between you guys. Uh, but that's just something to think about, because she's going to be handling paperwork, handling, um, other things and, and be handling more hands on. That might be something to think about, when probably already have other jobs and busy in your other careers outside of this, um, as far as that goes. But I think having three signatories on the count is really valid, but having two sign off on the check, I think is also wise. So keeping checks and balances of everybody, like five hundred dollars was something I was thinking, I'll give you what Brian said. Just where it's, it's a good enough amount to cover a newspaper that you put out the newsletter, but again, it's not too high. So you have somebody kind of watching over the budget, so we're not getting out of hand, because we're babies and we're growing, but we want to keep it a real tight budget as tight as we can.
Thank you, Sharon.
Kenzie Salisbury, how we would it for? So have we checked with any other towns to see what their range is as far as financial processes and writing off the checks? And then, um, also what kind of checks and balances would be being placed, and having somebody or a lawyer, we mentioned that at the end of the, at the end of the year, that every single month, like an itemized, I think that's a wonderful idea. So, um, just checking with the other towns to see kind of how they do, I think would be a good thing to do.
Thank you, Kenzie. Kevin Singovich, who's on pass.
Sherry Vincent, category three, two, three. Um, I think once something small like the newsletter item has been passed, then that should be able to be signed by the secretary that I hope we hire. And, um, I, I think the, the single item, I like that, that phrase, it's very much single item over five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, any other discussion on number eight? We have a motion. We don't have a motion. We don't have a motion.
So I make a motion that we pass eight, reading and discussing, consider granting signatories authorization to approve single expenditures of not more than $500 without council approval.
Well, with two or three or four signatures?
Well, with two, okay, so then, I can add to that, and with two signatures, so we're gonna have three, we're getting ready to authorize three people in the next item, so we'll say two are required for a check.
Okay, right, okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to consider granting an authorization with two signatories to approve a single expenditure of not more than $500 without a council approval. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Moving on to number nine, discuss and consider authorized signatories for the town's bank account, so...
We just gotta take nominations, or how do we want them, draw straws?
Is Mayor Potem often on that? That makes sense.
Yeah, much for your youth, Tom, and Cindy.
All right, I'd agree with that, I definitely think Mr. Anderson should be on that pair of two, no.
Um, well, I need to ask for citizens.
Oh, go ahead.
Nancy Perry?
Nancy Perry, Butler Lane, and I just want to throw in, I think it's a good idea to have the secretary, Mayor, Mayor Potem, as signers, when the bills come in, she's, whoever holds that role is gonna be the one that's opening the bills, and making sure that all of the paperwork gets handled, et cetera, and if it's reported at the meetings, and if it's reviewed by outside people, that's oversight, no, nobody gets to go to Bahamas for free, without everybody finding out soon.
Thank you, Nancy. Tonya Pollard?
Yes.
Sharon Krunch?
My second, Nancy.
Okay. Nancy Salisbury?
Thank you. Nancy Salisbury, how would it perform? I would like to know how often an audit would be performed, and then who would be doing it, if it would be y'all and the secretary, or completely outside source, and how often that would be, and then, you know, pretty much said number twelve, like, eight, nine, or like together, I was gonna see if they do a different limit number financially, signing these checks versus the other ones, but it sounds like it's $500 or possible, or than anything above this council.
I can answer your question, I believe, so by escape law, I require to have an outside audit once a year, and that is been approved in the budget, so it is not any of us.
Is it third, second, list them in the, in the agendas every week, they'll, they'll be up for public review at all?
Absolutely. Well, I'm gonna put that, if you can put that on the, hold up, you on the, if it's on the agenda, it'll be online, so, it'll be very transparent, I just think. I guess, since we had, let's see, Kevin Sinkovich, it passed, Sherri Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, so, we had two citizens comment that it would be convenient to have the secretary, she is part-time, I don't know her, but her, her, the people who do know her, and her recommended, were highly recommended, she recommended as trustworthy, that was the first thing that they said, and I know that that's important, I know that Cindy's family has known her for, her whole life, almost, so, I know that we have, we're a small town, I think Tom is fairly available, so I think that could be very convenient, because, you know, you're trying to get bills, those are you who pay bills, and know that, when you have a bill due, it's nice to have someone there who can actually sign the check to get it done, because you don't want to be late, right? So, that's just my thought on it, that, you know, hopefully we need to choose somebody who is readily available, is all I'm saying, so that we can prepare for some of them.
I'm not in disagreeance at all, and, and I appreciate it, the only question I thought, or what I was thinking, this, being a subcontract employee for the time being, it's not somebody that we're gonna have on a, as a permanent position, because that signatory could change if she elects that she wants to leave the position. I know it can always change, but I think right now, while we're, while we're discussing a subcontract employee, I think it'd be best business practice if we don't put a subcontract employee on our bank account.
I see your point. All right, so it's been mentioned that Mayor Potem, any other people who can, any other council members who might, and Cindy, and who are, who are fairly readily available, that could pop on over and get the checks on?
I make a motion that we authorize Tara, Tom, and Cindy as signatories on the account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded that we have authorized signatories on the town's bank account is myself, Mayor Potem, council member Anderson, and council member Cindy White. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, guys, do you want to come by any, sign up? Number ten, discuss and consider interlocal agreement with Kaufman County for road maintenance as modified. So we have a roughly three-page agreement, interlocal agreement between Kaufman County and the town of Poudre, and, we did run this by the citizens, volunteers, they didn't have anything, any revisions on that, so I think, without reading the whole entire thing, I think the gist of it is, here's now therefore, the mutual covenant consideration expressed herein, the county, the town hereby agree as follows, the county agrees to provide at no cost to the town the labor and equipment necessary to complete the road projects as requested by the town and accepted by the county. I wanted to get around that, so our tax dollars are going for the labor and equipment necessary to complete the road projects as requested by the town and accepted by the county. The parties here to, here to must enter into separate agreements for each specific road project, which shall automatically be incorporated as is set forth fully herein upon execution by both parties. Each road project shall be negotiated and signed by authorized representatives of town and country, town and county, excuse me, the authorized representative for the county shall be the commissioner or the road supervisor, or the union executive commissioner. The authorized representative of the town shall be the mayor or a council member designated by the mayor. And then, number two, the town agrees to compensate the county for the fuel materials costs for each road project unless the materials are to be provided by the town. The county shall provide written estimates of the fuel and material costs when and when required for each road project requested by the town. Upon receipt of the written estimate from the county, the town will contact lenders for materials the town may elect to either pay for the materials that the vendor other than choosing, or use material, materials purchased by the county, and reimburse county under such costs. The written estimate submitted by the county will become a part of the separate road project agreement described in item one of them. And then it goes on, and of course, there's, I, there's wording that talks about, that hereby bound to hold the town, hold harmless from the act, or they should have any representative agent or customer, you know, protected, and then it sets, you know, I think there's agreement in here, if it's substandard, then we'll address that too, I don't read the entire thing. Is there a new comment?
I guess I just asked Patricia, on nine, where we say, any notice to be given here under a vagrant party pursuant to the agreement shall be in writing and delivered via email to the authorizer pursuant to the other party, and, and like, is, is that the gentleman? Is that okay?
Yeah, we did revise that on, on.
On nine, the first.
Yes, we did revise, it did say something about regular mail, we use the regular mail anymore, right? So just email.
Yeah, he is, we're gonna be doing a lot of communicating.
Hopefully.
And emails, much more efficient.
Right, that was, that was needed.
And by the way, Mike used to ask the question, have Anna Thompson and Marty Murphy seen this, answered yes?
Yes, they have, they sure really have. And I wanted to go in there, I went on the Kaufman County website to find out how much of our tax dollars goes to roads and pole, and they have, the tax is point zero eight eight eight, excuse me, point zero eight eight six three five percent, ends up being seventeen percent of the total, let me re-read this, the point zero eight eight six three five is the, how much per hundred dollar valuation on property tax, the ends up being seventeen percent of the total of their budget, is spent on bridges and roads, so, when we pay our county taxes, then we are still, we are benefiting, and then they are gonna bring to the table the labor and equipment, and we don't obviously have the funds, or either of those, so what we can bring to the table, what has been budgeted for, is definitely pay the materials cost. We have worked in the, in the volunteer capacity with the company Texas Bit, which is also one of the ones that Kaufman uses there in Terre, very fortunate, actually, they had it that close, there's also a city location in Terre location, per ton, the high performance cold mix is a hundred and ten dollars per ton, so that, and it's listed here, so, we could have at least the knowledge of what Texas Bit, or if I do talk with Commissioner of New York State, to do some sort of comparison for Hunt County, they go to R.K. Hall in Greenville, but we couldn't find any specific numbers, but they also have the cold mix, the asphalt, their website lists several things that they also have, that that's, of course, Hunt County's a whole other, but for Kaufman County, the high performance cold mix is a hundred and ten dollars per ton, and Aaron Conway has been very, very gracious to, to say, hey, we were going to, when, on these road projects, we have a new, he actually said, we have a new piece of equipment, it was twenty thousand dollars, that it will trim back the trees where they look much better, he said they won't look quite that, he didn't say that word, but, so, so it'll look much better than the previous equipment does, so, he was excited about that, and so, when we talk about fuel, we'll be paying merely the fuel costs for the right-of-way trevers, and the tree trevers, and all of that, so. Any other comments? Now, this agreement, we, I think we, at last regularly, we had this agreement, we had to modify it, I did, like I said, we, I talked with Aaron Conway, who is Terry Barber's supervisor, and we, we were discussing some of these about the direct, about, you know, can we get our trees trimmed, and our right-of-way load, and he was very agreeable with that, and, you know, it still has to go through the judge's permission, so we're doing our end, and then it still has to go back to them, so, that he, that Aaron, he's supervisor, and he said over ten people in the roads, so he has quite a bit of say in that, so, that Paul Richards does have to sign us, and it does have to be attested by the county clerk.
First, thank you, Tara and Tom, for working so hard on this, it's gonna save us a whole lot, I think it's a great agreement, and I would ask, I intend the interlocal agreement between the county of Kaufman, Texas, and the town of Poudre, as is.
Is there a second? We won't vote, you can tell your comments, but, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for item ten, Nancy Perry, if you want to speak, okay? Tonya Pollard?
Yes.
Okay, chat list?
To put it in the current tax, after the last meeting, I see there's confusion, so I went ahead and emailed through the town, just to make sure that there was no further confusion, that at no point did I ever deny, not wanting to be part of or serve on a part of the Roads Commission, this is the response that I got, and it brings with it a couple issues. First, why isn't it that non-elected officials are monitoring the city email? And who is the her that we're referring to? Second, is that when we go through this, it seems that there needs to be an issue from a state perspective, is that we tried to change the minutes, but I think we clarified those, that the committee was supposed to have two volunteers that were gonna go negotiate with Kaufman County. If those volunteers didn't go, you didn't have the actual, more apparent authority to meet with Kaufman County, so anything that we've done can now put us up for litigation.
I think Patricia handled that last time, she spoke to that last time.
Last time being the June fifteenth meeting?
I don't remember, but she spoke to that, that, that if we agree on an agreement, and we did have some experts look over the contract, so that's Danny Thompson and Mark Murphy did look over the agreement, and they had nothing disagreeable with it, and so, for...
Okay, so, all right.
Thank you. All right, Sherri Vincent?
I'll go.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded to, for the interlocal agreement between Kaufman County and the town of Poudre, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, and we're gonna have a, how about we have a recess? All right.
Can we get a marking? This is my marking.
I never sounded better.
Marking, oh, it's marking now, okay, so, gee, Joshua, cool, we have four marking lines, woo-hoo, thank you, Satcher's in Joshua. Okay, so, all right, so, yay, we've got Kaufman County Road Maintenance Modified Agreement, yay, number eleven, and last, that is our last item, it's not in there. Discuss and consider ordinance of the town of Poudre through the non-exclusive solid waste collection throughout the town and associated regulations providing for a penalty and providing an effective date.
Mike, did you get this figured out, the words?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of notes, but I...
Okay, so, it's kind of a three-part deal here. There's the ordinance, and then there is a franchise agreement for each collector, and then there is a little bit of a liability sheet here, on what the attorney suggested for bi- minimum limits of insurance, and that's recommended by our town attorney. So, my ordinance is five pages. It's for solid waste. It is a non-exclusive type of agreement. I think the only thing that I thought was very good, it was kind of a mix of what Terry Fowler had mentioned, and what Cindy had mentioned, and what Mike was coming together with, and after all of this conversation we've had about trash. On E, it says, all collectors shall clearly mark all collection vehicles with the collector's name, address, or telephone number. All collection vehicles used by the collectors to collect municipal solid waste from within the town shall be no larger than a single axle tied, which will not exceed thirty-three thousand pounds GBWR unless specifically written approval is granted by the City Council. Trucks used for the commercial and roll-off services may be tandem axle and may not exceed sixty thousand pound GBWR. And we explained, do you know what that stands for? GBWR?
Yeah, gross vehicle weight rating. So, that's, that's the legal limit that the vehicle could weigh according to text dot.
Okay.
So, the idea there is that, and looking at other towns' ordinances, and this one is a lot of tallties, our workshop input embedded, thirty-three thousand seems to be a good number for, they call it a single axle. I'd say it's two, we just got one in the front and one in the back, two axle truck. We do have some trucks currently operating in the town that are quite a bit bigger. In fact, we have four axle trucks from some of the bigger ones. But the idea here is to limit them to smaller trucks, but allowing the roll-offs to have bigger ones because a forty-yard roll-off might be heavier, so.
No, I like that. So, so the heavier the truck, the more damage it does on the roads, and so we're trying to protect our roads and stuff. So, I was wondering if we shouldn't add a line that says that they should present proof of weight upon enrollment with pictures? So that we know these towers, or we don't know the weights? And I know that you can take your vehicles and weigh them at weight stations. I think Hunt County has one.
Well, the GBWR is on a plate on the table, so it's required by the manufacturer. Is the weight rating, your horse trailers have them, cars have them, pickup trucks, everything has a weight rating on it, and that's the maximum legal weight that that vehicle is allowed to be operating in public.
So, then maybe just take a picture of that?
Yeah, we can include that on the franchise agreement, that you may their fee, they can send us a little picture and play.
Is it fair to ask the vendor a question on the weight?
Um, what do you think?
Can we ask the vendors a question about weight, not about the business?
They're kind of a more professional, since they did do it.
Cause if I, if I'm thinking right, any of the trash vendors.
Right.
I think the highest rating you can get is thirty-three thousand pounds with a single axle without a drop axle, correct?
Right.
So, any single axle truck, if we ever see a truck in the city with dual axles or drop axle, that's the optional one that rides up until they load it, they're not gonna be exceeding thirty-three thousand pounds. So, we can ask for verification, but that's, that's why that thirty-three thousand is written, because that's the heaviest weight you can have in a single axle.
And that's empty weight, right?
No, that is the gross weight of that vehicle loaded. That's the maximum.
The maximum loaded.
Yeah, if they exceed that weight, DOT pulls them over, DPS and scales them, they're gonna pay serious fines.
Okay, so, empty, then they would be around twenty-three, twenty-four, whatever. Okay, okay, gotcha. Okay. I know that, I'm not really sure if there's probably others. Okay, so, there's another section here that, number H, it says, no collector shall collect any municipal solid waste within the corporate limits of the town, not first obtaining and holding all other permits or licenses required by any other governmental agency or political subdivision having jurisdiction over collector's operations, including but not limited to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, known as the TCEQ. A collector must be newly licensed or permitted to deposit municipal solid waste at or in a landfill regulated approved by the State Agency. So, I was wondering, is that also something that we need to have proof of?
I don't know. I mean, the idea of the wording was to just make sure that the people that are operating in our town are doing it within the state and federal law, so that we don't have any kind of responsibility. And again, I would encourage, if we wanna do that, put that in franchise agreement. That can be one of the things that they have to present, you know, they're gonna present their insurance card, they're gonna present their weight plaque, if that's what we need, you know, weight rating, and they can present the, I don't know what the licensing is for trash trucks and all that, but there must be something that says they're not making bad stuff and they're not doing dangerous things.
Okay, so, in the franchise agreement, that's probably a good, good place for that. And I was glad to see, under duties of owners, occupants to maintain premises, that the capacity of the containers should not be less than twenty nor more than ninety-five gallons. I did have a citizen who conveyed to me that she just can't lift those ninety-five gallon poly cards. And I thought, you know, there's probably a lot of people that can't do that. So, if they have an option for, I think that's a really nice option, to do a smaller, because it says not less than twenty, but not more than ninety-five. I think that's good. Just a comment.
And I'd like to just clarify with those, it says in A, under the saying, under the duties of owners, that they must provide and maintain suitable containers with placements of garbage and trash. And I suppose one of the ways, and I just wanna make sure I understand this right, one of the ways that can provide a container is by making an agreement with the trash service that one will be provided, right?
Right.
So, most of us are.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be less than thirty. And I get appetized, and they're confident that I do. So, all right. Any other comments?
The only other thing, yeah, one other thing in section B, or section two B, at the end there, it says, let me just read it, it says, in addition to the foregoing permanent requirements, any person, firm, or corporation collecting solid waste for any residents within the town shall first enter into a franchise agreement with the town. Said agreement shall be on such terms and conditions as the parties may mutually agree. And that doesn't specifically say, to my knowledge, that it will be the agreement that we hopefully pass a minute, that just says A agreement, which means we could have multiple agreements going, and I would just want to avoid, if we can, you know, somebody paying smaller franchise fees than the next guy down the line, just so everybody's on the same agreement. I think that'd be more fair. It might keep us out of legal trouble, but Patricia would be better than doing that.
For sure, but I, I think with the saying, enter into a franchise agreement with the town, said agreement, so referencing the franchise agreement, shall be on such terms and conditions that the parties mutually agree. If we don't agree to it, if we wrote it, so we do, and if they don't agree to it, well, then we have no mutual agreement.
But does it have necessarily to be the same as every other franchise agreement with the other trash services?
I think so.
I think it should be material, even same. Definitely the franchise base, anything that we charge one, we charge the other, that the other should be zero favoritism or anything that could be perceived as favoritism at all.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think we should change that, then clarify that.
So, this is just generally some of the words that you see in agreements, just to say, everybody has to agree, so that's not even a necessary statement to have in here. But as I mentioned, like y'all are doing, that you're gonna have one standard form that everyone's going to use. So, the only thing I would say is that, you know, you're gonna prove that form, so everyone's gonna use it as each one of the franchises, that everybody's mentioning on the same day and sign out, although they may, since we're doing this all collectively in one process now. But typically, you would have them stagger, you know, various times. So, you may end up with somebody who, you know, the following year, y'all decide that, you know, they say, I can pay you six percent franchise fee, and then you would have to amend that. But you're using one standard form, so you can delete that sentence, that's just something that usually comes in, it's just standardized.
I have a question, and Patricia, I'll leave it to you. Under page one, on the just solid waste, third line, it says, dead animals and abandoned automobiles. I was under the impression that dead animals could not go to landfills, and then abandoned automobiles also contain some hazardous waste because of baggage and various things. Is, is that correct, or is that normal?
Okay, dead, dead animals, and I need to even talk about this, but dead animals usually under ten pounds may be possible in trash. I think it's awful, but they may. And I guess that if you threw a rat out, that you caught a mouse trap. Abandoned automobiles, that would have to be a special type of pickup collection that you would have to do. I can't see otherwise found out with the old wear and run ingredients, right?
Well, admittedly.
This is, yeah, this is just a definition that, and even an automobile, I can't see solid waste coming to take with that.
Okay, well, then when it gets into the franchise agreements, to me, what's important, because large, large dead animals, horses, cows, and that's especially, that people take those, but I don't think we're gonna be asking them to do a franchise agreement for something that they'll do for the lives.
No, no, it's just something that I see in solid waste contracts for all our clients, because it's always kind of, I look at it and I just scratch on it, but it does say, you know, carry on with just dead. If they have a dead stump. Yeah, and they don't wanna bury that. Less than ten pounds.
So, so it needs to say dead animals, less than ten pounds?
Yeah, but it's always, I mean, usually has that as more of their guideline, so I don't know if we might.
But I guess here's a racist question. Say, when we have a dead animal, large animal, are we gonna require a franchise fee for them?
No, no. It's not like they're gonna go through town or we need to pick up.
This, this, yeah, a big car.
Yeah, I don't see them picking up a dead car for me either. He doesn't have to fit in a trash bag.
So, so speaking of that, are we gonna take our trash to the landfill, because we'll be monitoring the landfill?
Okay, can you, mind, as an, as an expert in the trash service, give my comments and speak into the dead animal situation?
I guess, if we really need to.
Well, there's some question on that, so what is your experience?
So, if you guys use our service and you need to dispose of a dead animal, you can call the office and we'll walk you through the guidelines. But as the attorney said, we don't like taking one. But if it's small and you guys have to dispose of something like that, then you can make arrangements with us. A large animal, over ten pounds, I'm not taking. It's, it's a safety issue for, a health issue for us, the guys in the back picking up the trash. And if it's a large animal, we go to the landfill, they can't find us. So, you guys need to make other arrangements, dispose of something like that.
So, so perhaps we should amend it to say, dead animals not over ten pounds for that? So, that's.
What about automobiles? Do we leave automobiles? If you guys wanna scrap automobiles, you can tie them on. If you guys wanna scrap automobiles and tie them on, I'll come get it.
I don't, I think that's simply a definition, I don't think that's a stipulation that they have to deal with that, that's just saying this is what this phrase means.
Yeah, they're regulated.
They're gonna operate under the rules that are out there, that have nothing to do with us.
Okay. Any other discussion? I guess we can open up to citizens this month. Becky Farrell, Becky Farrell.
My name's Becky Farrell, I live at one oh five nine four, County Road two three three two. Once the road splits there at two three three two and two three two six, I'm at Green Mailbox. It's been run over six times. I finally got my garbage collector, AWT, to please put my garbage can back up against the wall of the fence, rather, and zip tie, and I provided that for them, and they did so. I'm a disabled veteran, a heart patient, and I am not allowed to lift more than ten pounds. So, I put a sign inside my garbage can asking them to do so. Every time they dump my garbage, please put it back up against the fence and zip tie. I have no problem with AWT now, and my mailbox hasn't been run over anymore. What I do have a problem with is a company called Progressive. Progressive should not, under any circumstances, be in poetry. I've called this company five times, begging them, please, when you dump the garbage from these cans, put them off of the road. You can go down two three two six on Friday and tell me how many of them garbage cans are moved. I'm getting to the point now that I stop and I push them out of the way. I'd love to run over them, but that would be a good thing to do. But if y'all see me stop in front of your house and move your garbage can, you know who it is, it's me. Hunt County calls me the paint guru. I'm the one who puts some orange circles around them gigantic pockets we get out here. Also, another thing, right there at two three three two and two three two six, I try to keep that corner as clean as possible. The idiot that lives on the corner, he come out and he asked me, he said, do you know what a property line is? And I said, yes, sir, I certainly do. He said, well, you're cutting on my property. I said, no, sir, I am not. So, I went in the house and I called Hunt County Commissioner's office and I asked him, who owns the ditches and the roads out here? She said, we do. I said, well, this idiot across the street says that I'm on his property. At one time, that was his property when he first got out here. But Hunt County came in, cut a road, and made ditches. And this guy just doesn't forget. But you've gone by there right now, tonight, and that, the, it's this tall, you can barely see the two three three two sign. See, y'all keep that in mind when you go, cause.
Tommy, thank you, Miss Becky, thank you. Okay. So, we're discussing the ordinance on solid waste. So, Nancy Perry. Okay? Nancy Perry's gonna pass, Tony Pollard. Tony Pollard, she may have left. Okay, Kim Kilner. Kim Kilner.
I wanted to find out about landfill. How is that gonna work if you want us to prove it? You wanna ask us to have like a letter from the landfill, or you wanna see our tickets every week that we go every day?
No. I guess that's a valid question. The reason that I mention that is, we, and I don't have, we had a council member who mentioned to me that there was a service that possibly wasn't using that, it wasn't you, but.
I was just trying to see if you're gonna want landfill tickets, or you wanna a letter from our landfill, thank you.
Maybe a letter would suffice, just a general letter would suffice. We, you know, we don't wanna pollute the model here. Okay. We don't want to pollute the model here. Okay, Glenn Strauss, he's going to pass. Sherri Vincent.
Pass.
Pass, okay. Are there any more council member comments? I think on G, maybe we need to address G, where it says, "Collector shall provide the town with a certificate of insurance showing general public about liability coverage with limits of at least $500,000 per person, $1 million per accident, $100,000 in property damage." I know that we got this liability insurance page, or two, or three, from our attorney, so I'm wondering if that correlates with that or not. Didn't get to check that. So this one here is.
If you use the longer one, we would take out that short provision?
Okay. So that part wasn't redlined, but if we use that longer exhibit that we have in here, we would take out that long provision?
Okay.
So have you council members still about our council, our legal council's recommendation on, now this is liability insurance, it says, "One million per occurrence minimum, aggregate minimum $2 million, property damage $1 million, aggregate minimum $2 million, comprehensive auto liability bodily injury $1 million, and then aggregate minimum $5 million. Comprehensive auto liability property damage $500,000, aggregate minimum $1 million, environmental impairment impact sufficiently broad to cover disposed liability on an occurrence basis $1 million, and then aggregate minimum $2 million." And then there's some, I guess, three and a half pages of details on what that entails. They're trying to look out for us. Trying to look out for us.
So where did this come from?
This come from y'all?
Yeah, that was an email, but.
So with this being looked at as a minimum to the ordinance, I know it's not, I don't think it's what we discussed, or is it? Because this is saying, well, I guess education looked at it. Comprehensive and general public liability of $1 million, and then aggregate minimum. So is this a $2 million policy?
One is per occurrence, and the other is the aggregate, so that's the total.
The total for?
For the coverage.
Okay, so they have $2 million worth of coverage, is what that's saying. Okay, and I believe my, you put in here, $1 million per accident, and then $100,000 property. So with his, I guess his ordinance, $1 million per accident, that's per occurrence, but this is just saying that you have to carry at least $2 million total.
Yes.
So I don't know if that's a lot or not a lot to a person that's in this business. I mean, you are folks that are, Brian, you are.
Brian didn't tell me. Yeah, $2 million.
So $1 million per occurrence, $2 million aggregate, this brings standard, $5 million is too steep, and $1 million personal hauls, whatever.
The comprehensive auto liability bodily injury, $5 million. You can change that to $2 million as well.
Yeah, those seem like big numbers. I'm not making sure this is not intended to be the thing that weeds out the foreign private trucks, that we just want to be realistic.
No, these are just some standards that typically see in solid waste agreements. So if we change the $5 million to $2 million, would that be more in line with the average? Okay, I hope that was in line.
Can we make an ordinance if they put the dead gun garbage cans off the street?
Becky, I'm sorry, you can't, you're out of order, I'm sorry. Not on that plot, you're.
We could certainly put that in the franchise agreement. In fact, I think there's some wording in here that says.
I think there is some wording in that.
Yeah, I think I put something in here. Okay, so just to be clear to us, so we're going to take out G on page three, where I talk about insurance, and we're going to paste what Emily and Patricia sent us in with that change of $5 million going down to $2 million for comprehensive auto liability bodily injury.
They're looking out for us, so three, three pages, three and a half pages to detail the insurance liability so that we're protected as a town.
Is it fair to ask any vendor, your vendors, to see if it's in line with, because we could talk to these vendors the whole time about the business.
Well, I know America said they had $5 million, but most of the other vendors that I remember currently, they were like, why don't type it at $2 million? I think that's pretty common. Not that there wouldn't be someone who might just have a million, but we kind of need to look out for our town first.
So Tara, how do you want to handle the franchise agreement? Because that's part of our today's.
Okay, so it looks like we need a motion to amend, to add in the liability pages that she has offered out. So she would give us a choice, basically. She felt like the one that was written was too minimal, it didn't cover us adequately, and so this three and a half pages covers us in our, in our legal advice. So that's, so we could replace G with the addendum page.
Okay, so I make a motion that we amend the solid waste ordinance, being considered to replace what is currently paragraph G, George, with the liability insurance document provided by the legal counsel, amending the line item in that liability document for comprehensive auto liability bodily injury to an aggregate minimum of $2 million. Everything else stands as it is.
Do we have a second?
Just to be clear, are we saying the whole three and a half pages would insert, or only the table would insert?
The whole thing.
The whole thing? Okay.
Be more clear.
There's a lot of.
Second.
So we have a motion, and it's been seconded for the ordinance with the amendments as stated to include the addendum pages recommended by our legal department, our town attorneys, to insert the requirements of the insurance with the amendment of changing the bodily injury to, from $5 million to $2 million. So all those in favor? Oh, did I know? Oh, maybe I didn't. Thank you. Okay, Becky Farrell, she, we had Nancy Perry, Toni Pollak, Kim, yeah, we did that. We did that, okay.
Is this a vote?
Lose it, Mike.
It's our last, oh.
Unless you need to microphone.
So are we voting to amend, what we're doing, or are we voting to amend and pass it?
Approve it as amended.
Approve as amended, as he stated.
All right, so are we going to amend about dead animals?
I think we're going to look at the franchise fee next, right? I mean, the franchise agreement, specific language next. So this is just the ordinance for the town, and then we're going to look at the franchise agreement that will go more specifically to each vendor.
And again, the discussion there is over a definition. It's just a definition, it's not a requirement that they deal with those other items. It's just saying this is kind of a universal definition for municipal solid waste.
That makes sense, all right. Do we want to address Bickel and make sure that we have all of our vendors using the same franchise agreement? Do we want to change that ordinance?
She said we could just strap this in.
Strap it in. If we strap that, then would it be inferred that we use the same franchise agreement for everyone?
What I was saying was, strike, do you strike the dead animal in the.
No, no, that was a franchise, they say it was mutually agreed upon, you said.
Oh, yes, just strike this section.
Is that also then with the sentence scrapped that you're voting that?
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion. Remind me where that was?
I think that's to B.
To B.
Oh, B, yeah, okay, so I'll amend my motion to include also striking section two, subheading B, Baker.
Completely striked.
Do we want to strike it all, or do we just want to take out?
Or the last sentence, I think.
Okay, sorry. So amend section two, B, Baker, removing sentence reading, "Set agreement shall be on such terms and conditions as the parties would mutually agree." That will be taken out.
While we're still up for discussion, I catch another $5 million policy in here at the end. It's under Honorable Livability Insurance. Under number two, Xi.
Third time's the charm, so I amend my amended amendment to include Xi, what is it, 11, Automobile Liability Insurance, changing the statement that reads, "Limits CSL of not less than," change that to $2 million, either in a central policy or in a combination of basic and umbrella.
And before you finish, for the period of the end of that amendment sentence, are we also scratching dead animals and automobiles?
I'm okay with dead animals. If we need to scratch it, put it again. They're not going to pick up dead animals, they're going to do what's legal, so they will pick up cars if we give them title.
Expressment. Okay, so why don't we just, the dead animals, amendment, automobile amendment, how do you all feel about that? You want to just scratch it? Okay, so all those, okay, these are going to be a motion to scratch. Dead animals, abandoned automobiles off of these ordinance.
Well, we still have a live motion, which is, I think we're going to deal with that.
Okay, so do you want to amend your motion again?
Okay, to the fourth iteration. You've got to promise me we're going to vote. So we'll take dead, what do we want, dead animals?
Abandoned automobiles.
And automobiles, sounds like a movie. Okay, so we'll strike that, where was that at?
It's on the front first page, second paragraph from the end, Municipal Solid Waste.
Okay, so in the municipal amendment, additionally, municipal solid waste definition, we will strike dead animals and abandoned automobiles. So I'll make a motion, I'll second the motion, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded to approve an ordinance in the town of poetry adopting regulations ready to deflection of solid waste from customers within the town requiring permanent agreement for the use of the town streets to conduct such business. As amended, striking out dead animals and abandoned automobiles, adding the addendum in place of item G, the addendum pages regarding liability insurance, and striking the $5 million and replacing it with $2 million in both those places. So all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Yay, thanks so much for that one. Okay, so general public comments, Nancy Perry.
Hi, Nancy Perry, 9775. So I'm going to point to this map in the back. You mentioned earlier that we were working on getting a real, better map. So from what I understand, the blue lines are the city streets. Around that are the people that we're allowed to vote whether or not we incorporate. And then any property that fronts to that, that's been turned green, is considered poetry proper, and anything that's not covered is EJT, ETJ.
Shall we, yes, we can answer that?
I have a question. Fashion question. Fashion.
We can have a discussion if you have questions about the map, why don't you talk to.
He can talk to.
Yeah, can you, or email the P and Z.
Okay, let me reword this. Can someone factually explain the map at the time?
If one of y'all knows.
Well, Catherine's still here.
Okay, so we do have P and Z chair to address that. Would you like to address that?
Okay, I want to go back there. The blue lines are the city. That is the city's territory. The green line, the door that did this lovely map for us, give this everybody's property line. So the green line are simply part of the property that is in the city. They're not, it's not city territory, it's EJT. But they're, one, you can take it as a piece of property, one owner. So only the part that's blue is in the city limits. Is that where?
Okay, so parts of the gray are.
ETJ. They are not connected to the.
Okay, so we can have a discussion, I'm sorry to answer the question, thank you so much, Nancy. Okay, so Jim Cook, Jim Cook. We have questions, you're welcome to discuss afterward for the, Jim Cook? Pass, okay, Lonigan?
We didn't discuss this tonight, I guess this is starting to open up, what we're going to talk about. We didn't discuss this plan and it's only, I'm thinking about that earlier, opening up a big bag of worms, and it's getting bigger and bigger. I think one of the councilmen, maybe, has been involved in that with the city attorney. And I would strongly recommend staying away from the planning and zoning. You can do that, and all you do is create division, and all the ways around. If you come in from the backside and then put in a division that you take in trouble, and then you have a division running right out of your home. So you really can't, really can't control that. The only way you can control this thing, and keep it in adjuvant, and keep farmers in business, is the farmers will have to do this themselves when they sell their property. If a farmer wants to sell his property to their developer, they will fix if they find a way around it. So anyway, I know y'all think I'm a troublemaker, but I'm not. I'm all about freedom. And we have given up millions and millions, women, that have fought for our freedom. And we stand here and we're going to let, we're going to give it away. It is, it's a sad deal, and our country's in the shakiness here. And we're not helping anything here, but follow it along, quick follow it, get off outside the box and look, and use some common sense. There's a lot of things there that gets in front of common sense, but if you just get rid of those things, that get in front of it, and use some common sense to think about it, you probably will understand this stuff. So thank you for your time.
Kevin Simovich, he's going to pass. Sherri Vincent.
Sherri Vincent, County Road 323. I just wanted to say, thank you so much for making tonight so incredibly pleasant, and thank you again to our council for all your hard work. And don't forget to stay and help put the chairs back together. Josh, where were the tables? Just spread out. There we go.
Thank you, Sherri. So, can you please clarify, do you have the vote on adjournment, or do I just adjourn? We don't, I can just adjourn. Okay, that makes it easier. Okay, adjourn.